Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, May the twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. It's nine o'clock A M. Let's do the pledge allegiance. Chris, would you please in that, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Stephen Gilde here, the chaplain for the, how many? The leaders.
Yeah, all of our first response. Well, good morning, and it's really good to be here. Would you join me as we pray? Father, thank you for this beautiful day, and thank you for our earthly government here in this great country. Where you, Lord, have established by your will through our forefathers and sought your guidance, and bring us one nation under God, we the people. Lord, we continue to seek your will and guidance, as your word declares that all authority comes from your son Jesus, both in heaven and on earth. Father, may we all continue to pray for all those that wish that authority, that seek your guidance, guard him, and to govern with this always in mind. And Lord, as we also remember this month of May, our fallen law enforcement officers and our armed forces personnel, who have given their lives much to protect our country, then we give honor and thanks for the great sacrifice, having protected this great nation. We pray this.
Amen. Thank you. Job. So we have public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Online? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioners, if I can, sorry, if I can interrupt. Item three on your consent agenda is ordinance three forty six, which is an ordinance to add a new three C site to the county's inventory of significant aggregate sites. Two days ago, Will Van Vactor and I received an email with a letter from Lisa Andrack, Greenbarr's attorney, with a letter for the Board of Commissioners. The letter contains computations by Kelso Surveying and Engineering regarding the impact of the board's final decision, which remind you was to increase the setback to a hundred feet from the property line of the neighbor Carter instead of a hundred fifty feet from the dwelling of Greenbarr proposed. You remember, the last evidentiary hearing we had was April eighth. The record was left open for the seven 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 period. Board convened for deliberations only on May sixth, at which point you guys rendered your final decision. The letter sent two days ago would be considered additional evidence. There was no request within the letter to reopen the record or to withdraw your prior decision. I don't know the intent of the letter, whether it was to invite a procedural error, somehow establish notice or preserve rights in a damage in an action for damages in civil court, or just to make sure you had all the information. Andrack would likely argue that she and her client were caught caught flat footed with the county's decision and had no opportunity to address the a hundred foot from the setback decision you guys made. That argument would be untrue. At the final evidentiary hearing, I pointed out the code provision that had the hundred foot setback provision that was part of the arguments that Carter submitted in the open record period. And she did address that in her final rebuttal. She just didn't include these financial calculations.
Why? Why didn't we hear about it two days ago?
She sent it to us two days ago. Exactly. So community development department, we did receive other evidence and arguments following the end of the open record period. We got a final argument from Carter within an hour of the final deadline. We rejected that because it was after the deadline, and so that would be my recommendation for you guys to do the same with this letter, not to not consider it and go ahead and sign the final decision and enact ordinance three forty six.
So do we have to make a motion on that, or?
I didn't want to present the letters. You and you guys make it clear that you're not. You're not going to consider it.
So add that to the motion?
No, you can just.
We're just going to move forward like we were going to before.
Just move forward like you were, and I just wanted to add to your attention. It's like getting a settlement offer. I want to make sure you guys were aware that it was sent to us, but let you guys make the decision to not consider it.
Yeah, this is just a for your information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to consider, you have to reopen the whole record and give other opportunities of an opportunity to butt for butt and the whole thing all over again.
Okay.
Perfect. Again, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second. Motion's been made in second, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved unanimous. We noted that Commissioner Emrick is not here. He's off under the county business. So discussion, Katie, are you there? Do we? You have two, the proclamation and then O H A intergovernmental agreement. Would like to speak to those.
Good morning. I am. Can you hear me? Okay.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right. I am a block away, so I can present in person.
Why don't we just kick off with Chris then?
Okay.
And you can do it. Is that?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Chris.
Good morning, Commissioner, staff and members of the public. For the record, my name is Chris Gannon. I'm the director of the Crooked River Watershed Council here in Prineville. I'm here today just to provide a quick summary update of some of the activities the council's been working on the last, say, year plus. I did submit to you, and I think you have in your record, a copy of our annual report from last year. I would say financially, the council's in probably better shape than it's been since I've joined the council in two thousand and eleven, which is really good news. Finances are always tough for small nonprofits. In terms of the highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention this morning, there are three areas that the council's been working on the last year plus that I I think would be of interest to to you guys. One is in the water quality arena. We've partnered with some local entities, including the county, the city, O I D, Swan Water Conservation District, and one conservation group out of Bend. And the whole idea with the partnership is to really address any water quality issues sort of generated in the Crooked River that then move down the crooked and into the Deschutes system. So we've been working with U S G S, the U S Geological Survey, on some studies to really kind of dig deeper, using more kind of technical science to figure out really where these nitrogen compounds are coming from and sort of what the sources are. So that's a really big, a big deal for our agricultural community, and we hope to have some answers to that by the end of this year. There will be a formal report in January of twenty six that U S G S is going to issue, and I would suggest that when that report is available, we come back with our U S G S partners and maybe give you a summary at that point. Two other areas we're working on, we're trying to really get beavers reestablished in the watershed, and that can be a hit and miss kind of game. Some landowners are not real keen on having beavers because they can cause problems with irrigation systems, culverts, that sort of thing. So it's a two-pronged approach. We'd love to see more beaver on the landscape, but we're sensitive around landowner issues where beavers can cause problems. So part of the program is to also help landowners with nuisance beavers and address those kinds of issues as well. So two-pronged approach. The last thing I wanted to bring up real quick is in the lower Crooked River, below Prineville, the nineteen mile reach roughly between the city limits and the Lone Pine Bridge, we're working with seven different landowners. These are large parcels. They all sort of share a common issue, and that is when we have high flows, like we've just experienced the last thirty, forty, forty days. Every year we have these high flows, parts of those banks erode. Landowners can use and lose anywhere from a few inches to a few feet, depending on the year. And it's just every year, it's a constant sort of leaky system, you might say, in terms of eroding that soil. So we're really trying to get more bank stabilization projects in place. I would tell you just really quick, when I started in two thousand and eleven in this position, the three challenges we had, and they're the same challenges, but the ranking ratings have shifted, the rankings have have sort of moved. I used to tell people that the hardest thing in our world was to get landowners to accept these kinds of conservation projects on their property. The second biggest challenge was to get funding secured. The third challenge was to get permits, pretty easy to do. That has absolutely flipped in the last few years. So the last five years, permits are now the hardest thing to get. Planners are sort of much easier to work with, we find. Funding's still kind of in the middle. That's always a challenge. That hasn't changed. I just bring that to your attention because if there's anything at all that you guys could do to help us with state agencies around permits for these kinds of conservation projects, it'd be fantastic. We can surely talk about that another time.
So those are state agencies?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Why don't we set up a meeting and sit down? Because I have a meeting with the governor every quarter, and I think she'd be interested here that her agencies aren't allowing these great projects to perform.
We would love that.
So yeah, let's work on something like that.
That's all I have. If there are any questions, happy to add.
Nope.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Thanks for, thank you. Thanks for keeping it quick.
Yeah, keep up the good work, guys.
Okay, you too. So yeah, just talk to, do you know Brianna? Or Sarah? Talk to those two and just figure out a time when we can sit down.
You bet. Katie.
Good morning. It's much better in person.
Yes.
Okay, we have first a request for a proclamation declaring May Mental Health Awareness Month. That proclamation originally came from NAMI Central Oregon, so I will give them gratitude for the work that they're doing in the space of mental health and that they have recently dedicated staff time specifically for Cook County, which is always appreciated when a regional organization can have dedicated face time in our county. So I want to express the appreciation for that and the work that they're doing across Central Oregon.
Is that the group I met out at the Presbyterian Church?
I believe so.
Paint rocks? Yeah, they were, they were really nice people.
Yeah, thank you. No, Alex is our mental health promotion specialist at the health department. So kudos to her as well.
Yeah, I have it. So Mental Health Awareness Month Resolution, Proclamation Declaring May as a Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness, and whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among rarely racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas suicide is now the second leading cause of death for fifteen to twenty-four year olds, with teenagers experience seventeen point three percent increase in the use of anxiety medications since two thousand and ten. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Cook County Board of Commissioners declares May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Cook County, Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. I, there's a lot of stats in that proclamation, and so I wanted to take a minute to recognize the real lives behind issues related to mental health and the clinicians that we have working in Cook County, our law enforcement, our schools, our families who are affected by significant issues that are increasing around the mental health of our youth and also adults. And so I want to recognize that work, and it is challenging work. And so I have gratitude for everyone that is working in this space to improve the health of our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proclamation for Mental Health Month, Awareness Month.
Second, motion's been made in second and to approve the Mental Health Awareness. All in, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
You want me to stay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have the order in front of me. Which one would you like first? Excellent. That's perfect. That's the one I have up. So this is, I believe, this is our nineteenth amendment. It's one of many, okay, sixteen, one of many adjustments that are sent out for our Oregon Health Authority Local Public Health Contract. The adjustments made here are to move approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars of prevention funding out of this fiscal year. We had a conversation with Oregon Health Authority that we wanted to be able to spend it next fiscal year, and they have granted that. So that money isn't going away. It will be reallocated to us next fiscal year. And then we have been awarded an additional seven thousand dollars to support our school-based health center. Those are the two changes in this amendment.
So we'll do a motion on this. So entertain a motion to approve agreement at one eight zero 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 seven. Amendment to the Oregon Health Authorities twenty-three twenty-five intergovernmental agreement.
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussions? By second, so now it's been seconded. So discussions all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
So this is a little bit off subject, but the O H A, I'm sure we're going to get a question here at the end of the meeting if we are moving forward with talking to some of the other neighbors in the surrounding the Knife River area. About that, I talked to D E Q after the meeting last time, and they said they were going to reach out. Have they reached out to you?
D E Q has not. Maybe John has heard.
Richard Crawford, so I should have updated you on this. So I've been talking with Greg Swieland. We, communication with with him and with O H A, we decided to do a one mile radius around the Knife River site. I went contacted G I S, and we got an address list for all those properties, and I sent that back to D E Q and O H A, and so they can prepare the letter, and we're going to get that sent out.
Okay. There you go, guys.
Thank you.
Read your mind.
Hey, Katie. Amendment. Mosaic.
Okay, next up is an amendment between the county and Mosaic Community Health for operations of the School-Based Health Center. This amendment updates the requirements for B being a certified school-based health center. So a lot of the language updates are aligning with those new standards for operating. And Mosaic is well aware of them. They're already adhering to them to be certified. Additionally, we wanted to acknowledge that the fiscal expense of operating a school-based health center is much greater than we have been compensating them. We have additional grant funds to be able to increase the subcontract, the monthly payment for the subcontract to Mosaic, and so I'm proposing that we do increase that monthly payment to acknowledge the fiscal expenses of operating school-based health center. It still does not cover it, but they are able to bill, and Mosaic has a great infrastructure to support school-based health centers across the region. And so it's more us contributing an increased amount to help offset those costs.
Hey.
Make a motion to prove the contract with Mosaic Community Health for the School-Based Health Center Services?
Second that motion. Motion's been made in second to approve amendment seven, School-Based Health. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Brad.
Morning, Commissioner Crawford, Commissioner Barney. I'm here to, I'm Brad Haynes, Cook County Road Department Superintendent, and I'm here today to ask for signatures for a contract with Albina Oil and for our chip seal this year. Little history here. This is, this was purchased, oil's being purchased through the Deschutes Counties contract, which was went through the procurement cross best. We're also asking for signatures in the rental of a distributor for our product or for our project this year. It's combined price is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Estimates on the high side, just in case we have weather conditions or something, but it will probably be less than that if material costs. So. This here is a shot of a distributor we'll be using utilizing from Albina. They'll be putting the material down for us, and then we will self be put it on with our own equipment and trucks and the chip seal rock, which we had a contract chip seal rock weeks ago. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the deterioration curve for roads. When you put a brand new asphalt road down, it starts to deteriorate immediately. The one on the left is a deterioration curve of just using the recommended treatments for the road. And it's nothing else other than the recommended treatments, and you'll see that the road is down into the failed area for at least full death rest restoration about twenty-five years. So with the chip seals and the crack seals that we put on the roads, we, the one on the right sees a, you see them little shark fins there? That is adding another few years of life to the road, so it extends the life of the road out well past twenty years. And you don't have that sharp decline in the curve when you get down into this up middle seventies to lower sixties P C I. And so you can preserve your road for a long period of time. That's why we do maintenance stuff, history there. This is a, everybody wants to smooth roads. I like to have smooth roads, but unfortunately, we're faced with our roads deteriorating, distressing. Picture on the right shows what kind of some of the stuff that we deal with here in the in the county and other agencies are dealing with. And this is why we do the road preservation, alligator cracking, distress, road edge break offs, and just potholes. So that's why we're doing this process. Next slide, please. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't. I think you're doing a great job. You've got a lot of miles ahead of you this summer.
Yeah, yeah. We're planning on doing twenty-two miles of chip this year and four miles of.
How's the, how's the rollout on telling the people, telling the people June, June for Canyon, what's coming? Have you, have you started that? I know we talked about that last time.
Yeah, we have a P C M S or reader board down there at the one mile marker headed up the canyon. We've had it in place since Monday morning. I do believe Sarah put a social media post out, and so we're giving as much information out to them two, a couple of weeks in prior, so we can, it won't be such a surprise for them.
It's always a surprise.
It's always going to be a surprise, but we'll do our best to not be surprised.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase, to purchase chip seal oil and distributor from Albina Asphalt via Deschutes County contract, total cost five hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars.
Second, motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. So number nine, approval of order twenty twenty-five sixteen, road rename at Prasada. Jim or John's, Jim, hey, Jim.
That's my thought. I should have started with this to be in the beginning. For the record, John Isler, Community Development Director. Senior Planner Katie McDonald is tied up this morning. Before you is order number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, which is a road renaming at Prasada Ranch. Private road from West Treehouse Court, Southwest Ironwood Court. Southwest Treehouse Court was originally approved in two thousand and twenty-three through the road renaming process. The portion of phase fourteen was replatted for smaller lots and approved in two thousand and twenty-one. Prasada recently approved, received approval to replat the same portion of phase fourteen to revert those lots to be more consistent with the single family lots and other phases at Prasada. The replat has not been recorded yet. It's still with the county surveyor. Staff emailed out a request for the road renaming comment was sent out on May thirteenth pursuant to our code. There are no other property owners on the street. It's only Prasada. They own all these lots. That makes this a lot, a lot more simple. Yeah, there we go. And then that was provided. So under Cook County Code twelve twelve three hundred. This is the next step, and this wasn't in, I apologize, wasn't in the title of the agenda request, but this does require a public hearing. And so once I'm done presenting, if you can open this up to a public hearing, once that's done, the the board has the ability to either adopt, reject, or modify this proposed order. And then once that's done and recorded, it'll be sent out to all the relevant parties.
Staff reporter will open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Online?
This isn't what you're here for, Tracy. Oh, just hanging out. Okay. Just checking.
No one wants to speak? We'll close public hearing? Anything further?
Nothing from staff.
So is this just one hearing, one public hearing?
Right, yeah. This is not an ordinance, just an order. So it's kind of like our budget stuff. It's just one public hearing, and then we're done.
Okay.
And I think, sorry, I'll just add that Prasada is trying to kind of hurry these things. They're trying to get this new design and concept available for Memorial Day weekend. So it's kind of why this has been pushed through a little bit.
Great. I make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-five sixteen for road rename. What it was Southwest Tree, Tree, Treehouse, Treehouse Court to Southwest Ironwood Court.
Second, motion's been made in second to approve order twenty twenty-five sixteen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved, approval of order twenty twenty-five sixteen.
Okay, Commissioners.
You bet. Me and Christina.
Morning Commissioners, Christina Heron, Cook County Finance Director. We have order twenty twenty-five eleven ordering the fees for fiscal year twenty-six, which will be effective as of July first two thousand and twenty-five. You have both exhibits. Exhibit A is the final for the order. Exhibit B are all of the changes highlighted, and you can see the change between prior fiscal year and the proposed. Happy to answer any questions you may have. This one also requires a public hearing. And we are set to go on community development side to go ahead and approve the entire schedule today if that's what you choose to do.
Okay. Well, we, your staff will open this up for a public hearing. Side, anybody have anything they want to comment on? None online? Anybody want to talk about it? Okay. entertain a motion to approve order.
Think we're going to close the public hearing?
Yes, we do. Close the public hearing. Now we'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-five eleven, ordering the fees to be collected by Cook County for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve order twenty twenty-five eleven. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thanks for all your work on that. I know we've been talking about that for a long time.
Yeah, I think it's really good this year.
Jamie.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Jamie Berger, Budget Manager for Cook County. I have in your packet, order twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. This is for a supplemental budget for the current fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-five. This order includes some changes, recommended changes to funds that are categorized as budget resolution. So of the packet, the two that are supplemental and the two that I'm going to highlight are the Special Transportation Fund, an increase of one point five zero five million dollars. This is due to decreased spending in the prior fiscal year. There was actually no spending. There was actually no spending, and we had thought there would be. So when we put the budget together, we anticipated normal spending because they didn't spend it. There's a significant amount of carryover there. So requesting a supplemental budget to go ahead and appropriate those funds because they are in the fund and make them available for the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council to be able to use those funds for special transportation in the current year. The other supplemental budget request is for the Risk Management Fund. Similar to special transportation, we have money in that fund set aside for the insurance deductibles. We didn't have to pay them out last year, but we left them available to be used last year if needed. So we have again a more significant carryover than we planned on. So we'd like to make those resources available in the current year. We don't know that we have the need, but we would like them to be there in case something happens between now and June thirty. So the rest of the suggested changes, like I said, fit more into that budget resolution, which means they're not, we're not requesting any changes to funds of greater than ten percent. And we're not requesting any changes out of contingency of more than fifteen percent. So in general, it's just changes in operating. For example, road department had more equipment repairs and maintenance than we originally planned on. So do you have any specific questions about any of these other changes to any funds or any questions about the supplemental budgets?
No, I don't.
Okay, so it is necessary to have a public hearing.
Open up a public hearing or order twenty twenty-five thirteen. Questions? And here online, any questions? Close the public hearing.
I make a motion to adopt order twenty twenty-five thirteen, a supplemental budget for Crook County fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
A second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve order twenty twenty-five thirteen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So move order twenty twenty-five thirteen passed.
Have one more for you.
Yes, do.
Okay. So order twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. This is another supplemental budget. This one came up after we had already done all the paperwork and advertising, after we had already initiated the previous one. So this supplemental budget is, is slightly different in that it is for a new trust and agency fund. This is pursuant to a memorandum of understanding that Crook County has with the Soil and Water Conservation District. So this would give us the capacity to accept revenue and have expenditure appropriations for solar mitigation funds that are held by the county in a fiduciary capacity. So if we receive the funds, we would be, we're requesting the ability to just pass it through to Soil and Water Conservation District based on that agreement that we have with them. So it's also need a public hearing. Do you have any questions?
No, I think I know what that's about. So do we need it? For public hearing too?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I just don't know if you have any questions about the MOU itself or its implications, so.
Okay, so we'll open it up for public hearing. But you have any questions? Online, any questions? Then close public hearing. Motion.
I make a motion to adopt order twenty twenty-five fifteen, a supplemental budget for Crook County fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second, this has been made and seconded to approve order twenty twenty-five fifteen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So move. Twenty twenty-five fifteen passed. Thank you, Jamie. Well, that gets us to the manager's report.
Good morning Commissioners. I have two, two quick items for you this morning. First one is a proposed letter to Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden regarding the Secure Rural Schools program. The, as I understand it, the, the US House is moving forward with the proposal that includes that funding opportunity. And that will likely move forward to the Senate, so we're urging our senators to support that program in the proposed bill. Happy to discuss the letter further, but you have, you have a draft front of you. I don't know that there's immediate urgency for this, so if you prefer to wait for Commissioner Hermick to be back, have the letter available next week, but we've been talking about getting this letter out for a couple of weeks, so.
I think, I think there is urgency, because I think they're trying to pass the bill by the end of this week. So I think it's the really good time, and it's really disappointing to me how much they've talked about how important this is and how this is such, something so important for rural Oregon and the state in general. And as soon as there's politics involved, they decide to go the other way and forget the people that live out here and forget the, all the people that they have been speaking about and how important they are. And as soon as there's a political edge to it, then that doesn't matter anymore. And it's, it's very frustrating, but that's kind of their, what they've been doing lately, so. Yeah, I totally support putting this letter out. I think it's super important.
Yep. I do too, and I think that we can get, we approved it, Susan can put her stamp on it. Stamp for.
Cool.
Does entertain a motion?
I make a motion to send the letter to Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden, talking about how important reauthorization of secure rural schools is for Crook County in Oregon.
Second, most of them made and seconded to approve a letter to Senators, this SRS program. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you, Will, for crafting that.
And Sarah was, was a big comment.
And Sarah. Thank you.
Other, just a quick note, just for the folks online and here in the room who might be planning on attending the June fourth regular board meeting. We have canceled the June fourth meeting. We will move that to June eleventh in place of the work session that would have been held on, on June eleventh. So you'll be having a regular board meeting on June eleventh instead of June fourth. So just want to make a quick note for anybody who might be interested.
You guys get a week off.
Hey, thank you, Will.
I got, just kind of kind of follow up. We talked last weekend, last weekend, last work session about how Will had implemented the, what's it called? I always screw it up, the checklist.
Checklist, public meetings, yeah.
Yeah, public meetings checklist. And then we also talked about starting to come up with parameters for how we would request all different boards and committees to film, record, and upload. And so I just want to kind of keep beating that drum of, is that something we maybe could do by the eleventh? Come up with kind of.
Like a best practices.
Yeah, not just, but I think the, the biggest holdup was who's gonna upload them for each department. Remember, I think that was our biggest holdback was that we needed to make sure that there was somebody there that we had in charge of that, so it doesn't just slip through the cracks and we don't say something and then go back on it. And so I, I would just be really great if at the next regular session, we could have some type of plan to move forward with that, because I think it is important. Good. Also, I talked to Patty Adair yesterday. She's working, oh, I guess I'm working with her on this juniper bill to remove junipers from Central Oregon. And there's the opportunity to get quite a few dollars to Crook County to bring more water in the system. And I just was willing, I jumped on that letter with her. So I think that's another really good thing that's coming out of Salem, one of the few.
Okay, I don't have anything, any public comment?
Well, we got it done quick, so there'd be plenty of time for you.
Thanks, Adam. Anybody online have anything? The comments?
Well, the only thing I would say is, I, I also talked to Greg about the, giving me the list of the amount of fines that they've collected at DEQ. So we can go to them and talk to them about, you're bringing in all this money from the state of Oregon. And then when people truly have an issue, you're not here to help and you say you're broke, which I find offensive. But he said with their hack, their hacking, I don't know if everybody heard about that, they got hacked recently. And he said there's, he's still having serious issues getting that list, but he is still on top of it. Do you have a copy? Well, that's, can you show me after the meeting? Okay, yeah, please send it to me. I would be really interested in seeing that. Okay. Cool.
So that, do I have any executive status? I didn't see me. Make a motion.
What? Second?
Motion to make, can you make?
Do I make it? I thought you made it when the adjourned deal comes around. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. Most made seconded, I'm sure there's no discussion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Yeah.
You all too.